Minutes, shoot, we could approve them. Let's just get started and see what we can get through.
Okay, let me just switch and pull up my screen before I hit record. For some reason, when I do my share screen, it keeps taking out my little boxes I have open. So let me just pull up the minutes again.
Okay.
It looks like we're recording our minutes.
Perfect timing Hector.
Kind of have to, we just, I just pulled up the minutes and Donna is gonna get ready to start the meeting for tonight.
Hello, my apologies, had my second dose today and feel a little funky, but yeah, I'll just leave it like that.
Okay.
You are recording.
Thank you.
Alright, so if we have a motion to get the meeting started, it is six oh nine.
I think you can start the meeting without a motion. How many people do we have to have to be able to vote on things?
I don't have.
I recall, I think the way it's written Roger is that it has to be of just a standing majority, so not counting, not counting the folks that work for the town. It would be yourself, me, Donna.
That's it right now.
Yeah, we need another.
Yeah, we, yeah, we do. We don't have enough. Carla is not able to join us tonight, she already just sent an email. So maybe as we move along, we'll have someone else, so. I'll just get the meeting started. We have the minutes, we can review them, we can't vote on them, but certainly if folks had a chance to see if there were any revisions needed based on what you saw in your recollection of the meeting.
Yeah.
Why don't we take a minute to go through that now? When you're ready for Angelica to put the page up, just let her know.
Submitting Shander into the meeting.
Oh, good.
Think you can scroll, Angelica.
Folks, ready for the page to go up? Okay. I think you can go up higher to the next page. You can move it up, Angelica. So we're at the end of the minutes.
Move the minutes be accepted as presented.
Second.
All in agreement?
Aye.
Alright, motions approved, as they are no revision, so we can move on to our next agenda item. Angelica, are you gonna put the agenda up, or what's easier? My phone, I just lost it. Okay, there we go. So we, that was old business, we are now moving on to new business, we're look, we're started right at the budget, senior graduation. Angelica, any updates or updates you have connected to that for us?
The only updates that got information from the gym school, they are having a senior graduation at Wickham Park for their graduation, and they only have about four students that are actually Bloomfield residents that are graduating. So I asked like, what were some of the things they need, they needed support in, and she mentioned any like little favors, they were looking at the school, the colors for the theme, she didn't give me some colors, so just little favors to go for for the event, they are having an event catered and expenses are paid for, are ready for the park. So I know last year is how to split between the number of students, because we only have four students that are graduating from gyms, and then we have a bulk that are graduate from BHS, and then we have our outliers are the ones that do not attend Bloomfield Public Schools. So with that, I'm not sure how much for gyms would you want to allocate to provide some of those favor supplies, and I asked the person in charge, she didn't have any particular item. Pretty much still figuring out things, are pretty much flexible at this moment.
Any idea how many from Bloomfield High?
No, I'm gonna reach out to the principal to see if they have, if they're from a while ago, if their agenda has changed with the graduation. Few months back, it was, they were gonna do the drive-through again, but I don't know if that has changed since corporate restrictions has opened up since then. So I'm gonna find out if they plan on doing a drive-through method again, and we can do the bags again, or if they have a whole different type of thing that they plan on doing.
Do we know roughly how many graduated last year, so we have some idea of dollars per capita?
Um, I think, I have to look back, I think it was at least I wanna say at least a hundred and twenty was from BHS, I have to just look back at those numbers to see how many we had anticipated for the BHS.
Okay.
Yeah, I know it was no more than a hundred and fifty for everybody from gyms, others, other residents and BHS.
And how much did we spend per student last year?
I don't think we broke it down by student, I have to see.
Probably just the total amount, that would help, that could help us.
Yeah.
Of what we spent on the bags with the items.
So we did it per school, or did we have, or just the total amount, like you said?
We just did the total amount, and we just had the few, the few, I think we had about five from gyms, and then we had to open for the additional ones that weren't part of Bloomfield Public Schools, let me see if I can find last one. See if I can pull up the last, I think the last one I have from last month showed the totals. We spent. Let's see if I can share my screen with the last one.
That's what I was looking for.
I move my people out of the way. So last year we spent a thousand dollars. So this was a total of, well, we did this order, it was for accommodation of everything for end of the year programs and combination, but we spent a thousand dollars towards the your senior bags and kits that included water bottles, pens, the drawstring bags, the blankets, that have Bloomfield Strong on it. Yeah, we spent a thousand dollars and we use other funds to supplement for the senior piece.
Okay.
And is that what we have available now, Angelica, because it looks like looking at the minutes, we had two thousand, and we put, and we spent one thousand.
We spent, we spent three hundred, and then if you add in what we voted on last.
Right.
We voted five hundred additional, I'm getting my calculator out.
We spent, yeah, we spent two fifty each, or five hundred for the Courage to Speak sessions, and five hundred dollars was set aside for Dynamic Influence Virtual Programs.
So that put us at thirteen hundred, because we had three hundred dollars with the trunk or treat and the trunk or treat stuff. And if we add on the Courage to Speak, Dynamic Influence, we'll be at thirteen hundred.
Right.
Which is three thousand, so let's see.
Okay, so we still have seventeen hundred.
Yes, yep.
Okay. And we don't have anything else that we would need to spend the money on, so we could just earmark the rest of it to go towards the plans for the graduates, we just need to determine what, do we want to do the bags again? Do we have ideas?
I'm willing to vote the money and let others decide how it's spent. Rather than getting in the weeds, and also, that, at that, at some point, we'll have a better idea of how many actual graduates we'll have. Does that sound reasonable to others?
I agree, I would, I would probably move forward that way.
Just to me as well.
Me too.
Okay, then I'll move, we allocate the remaining seventeen, if, oh yes, check, Angelica, there's nothing else you want that money for, right?
Um, the only thing I had on here from before were some trainings, but we had paid for those already. So I'm finding a little maiden going towards the, the graduation piece.
Okay, also move then that the remaining seventeen hundred dollars be allocated for graduation, with the the particular details to be determined by by Angelica and whoever else she wants to talk to.
Everybody else? Okay. Alright, so we have determined what we're gonna spend the rest of the money on, and Angelica, you can just report back out to us what the final decision was that the money went to. We can just have that discussion at another meeting.
Okay.
So summer youth employment?
So the application is up for some youth employment through the Capital Workforce website. We have been getting people apply, I've been getting phone calls and emails in regards to how to apply in a little bit more detail from parents. So the application deadline is May first. So I'm trying to reach out to Capital Workforce to see if they can grant me access to see how many people have applied. I just don't want to be in a situation where we have, you know, two hundred applications and only twenty-five slots. So my last conversation with Capital Workforce is we will not have access to the program until May first to access those applications, but I'm gonna see if they can set at least maybe a limit cap for our site, because we do have to interview all of those candidates that do apply for making sure the applications are complete, and if they are qualified, do an interview process with them, and then kind of screening who we select for, for the work sites. In terms of marketing, we do have the flyer posted on our Facebook page. I have it on the, the signboards within the town, I have it posted on that as well, so people driving by can see that it's there. It has went from email blast from these, these are services, and for our department as well. We have the flyer going out with how to apply, how to contact, and also there is a QR code for the application guide, and I have gotten some responses back from some DCF workers that have some questions about eligibility and different towns for some of the youth that they had in mind for, for summer youth employment.
Great.
Right now, we're still working.
Did it go to the schools, Angelica?
Yes, yep, it went to the high school, and I had it sent out with the Board of Ed, if they, if they can send it out to gyms and BHS, so at least the two schools have the information for the program as well. Terms of work sites, we're still working on adding additional work sites for our for the work sites, right now we have mostly town departments, so just trying to get a few more, so we can have enough spaces and slots for, for the kids for the work site piece.
Were you able to work it through, you mentioned at the last meeting, I recall that you had to work it through with HR around using community providers, was, was there any resolution to that? Like, you know, a local store?
So we're still waiting, we're back in terms of insurance coverage, if we, if we are able to go that route.
Yeah, the issue is liability. Yeah, so we are waiting to hear back from Kerma, our provider, insurance provider for the town of Bloomfield. They're reviewing the, the summer youth employment contract. Because the, the youth are on our payroll, and they're placed in other work sites, which we have no control over. You know, what happens there, you know, we have our requirements in terms of trainings, like for example, sexual harassment training and all these other things, but you know, placing a youth in another environment where we don't have any control over what employees, you know, are are required to go through with training is a concern, so that is something we are doing a little bit more research on, and hopefully, we will be able to place some kids.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or updates from, needed from Angelica on their summer youth employment program?
I have a question, so the, the youth just has to be from Bloomfield, and what's the age again?
Well, the ages are fourteen, fourteen to seventeen, so we have fourteen and fifteen year olds are going to be working in an instructional learning that we teach in the foundations of getting ready for employment, all the steps you need to have those job readiness skills. They actually get paid through a stipend, because they're not actually working, and then our sixteen and seventeen year olds, they get paid the, the minimum wage, and they will be at the actual work sites, working based on where we place them at. So for requirements for us is they have to be a Bloomfield resident. So that's our, that's our main thing, they just have to be a Bloomfield resident. I know sometimes you get a lot of questions where they go to school in Bloomfield, but they live in a different town, actually have to live, live in Bloomfield.
And what's the website again?
It is capitalworkforce.org/SELP. Let's see if I can put it in the chat.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe you can pull it up.
If you like.
Can you, can you just send it to the entire board?
Sure.
That's great. Case those who are not present would like to share it, or know someone who could qualify for it.
And it's also mentioned in our, the newsletter that recently went out for the town. So it is posted in there that we'll be participating in the summer youth employment program as well.
And Jelka, maybe you can pull up the site to share, just in case someone is on YouTube and watching this after the fact, because they won't have access to the chat, so they can at least see the, the page.
Pulling up the website. So here is capitalworkforce.org/SELP. So once, I'm telling everybody, it's a little bit different process this year, everyone has to, they might have to recreate a new account for this year, so once you go onto this main page here, some people have, they went straight to Capital Workforce, I'm just telling them, there's a blue box on the left side to click summer youth appointment, and summer youth appointment and learning program, and then it'll bring you to this page, and basically this click the apply now button, and once they do that, there's a login and password that they have to create here, if they haven't already registered, it is make account to register, and they'll bring them through the application process. Also, on the website, there's the application, free application guide. But this guy gives step-by-step instructions, if people still have questions or on how the process looks for the different forms of requirement to upload to the application.
Great.
And this is gonna be up until May first, so I was telling everyone, if they're interested, just make sure you at least apply, because once the application closes, I have no control over opening it back up to have them apply as well. Right, were there any other questions for summer youth employment?
Nope, looks like we can move on.
Okay, so for community programs and events, we do have a April parenting wellness virtual series. See if I can pull this one up. So this one, it is a free virtual parent series for Bloomfield residents, it's with licensed therapists from Evolve Behavioral Health. And each week will be a different topic, so the topics that's gonna be covered for the month of April, and the meetings are going to be held every Thursday from six to seven thirty PM. The topics include balancing the two pandemics, physical and mental health, mindfulness, fun, self-compassion, self-care equals a happier you, and squeezing and fitness. So, so far I have about seven, seven parents registered. Tomorrow I'm gonna make my phone calls to all the parents that did sign up through the QR code on Google Forms, to let them know I sent them the link. So once you fill out the Google Forms, two ways you can register, there's a QR code on the application. There's a Google Form that takes your name, email, and once that's in our email, the link. I've even had parents just call me directly, and I just filled it in for them and sent them the Zoom link as well. I'm gonna stop sharing this screen to see if I can pull up the flyer. So yeah, so on this flyer just has a little bit of information about the presenter. The top is covered, so this QR code, just scan it, and it'll bring you straight to the Google Form. Write your email address and name, and actually captures the age group. That way we can kind of get a sense of what age group that we have a high, high trend in for the town as well. Trying to help us gauge what type of services and programs that we can do in the future as well. And this is also posted on the signboards in town, I had them add that as well, and this did get sent to all the schools. I had Krista with the Board of Ed send this flyer out to all of the schools in Bloomfield. So any parent from elementary up to high school should have received this flyer as well with this information, and we did our usual email blast through our email distribution list and leisure services as well to get the message out for families to register.
I don't know what else we can do to get the word out, because people are always like, oh, we didn't know. We don't ever hear about these things, I don't know what else we can do to get the word out.
And I also had this sent out to our current foster care families, and I did have the foster care support worker send it out to some of the supervisors and contact lists that we had as well, so they have this as well to send out to, if they have any families that are Bloomfield residents that will benefit from this program. I do have two of our foster parent families, they are, they're signed up for this as well. So I'm trying to make sure I reach everybody from every avenue and say, this is what we're doing. So I feel like, we're getting, we're getting here.
I sent it out also to our home daycare provider network, so
Yes.
I don't know how people can't say they don't see stuff, because it's everywhere.
Yeah, I forgot, I asked, and I also sent it through our North Central collaboration for Bloomfield residents, it was sent out through that as well, so and the summer one too.
Right.
Comment to that, Angelica is, you know, don't, don't be discouraged. You know, it is just the kind of first go at it, right? So I don't see the number as being necessarily horrible, just because it is a first go around, and maybe as things catch on, we'll get more people involved in it, so.
Yeah, and I totally.
Said, it seems like everybody is saying, you know, that's no different than the message we always receive. It's unfortunate, because I think if there were other people on the call, I think we could maybe spread the word a little bit better, but we'll talk about that a little bit later in the meeting.
So I'm like, as long as we get somebody signed up, we're doing great.
It looks like a great series too, it really looks.
And I really worked with the presenter to kind of really talk about, like, what are some of the pressing issues that families have been having, you know, kind of brainstorm with our foster care team and parents from what they wanted, try to really have a good, well-balanced things to keep them engaged as well, so. See, and hopefully, hopefully, the first session is Thursday, that once, you know, word of mouth is, you start to see, hey, you know, this is something, there's three more sessions, sign up, and just check it out to see. So, yeah.
We can give an assignment for people to share, those who attend have to share with ten people.
Yes.
There you go. Yeah.
I'm signed up, and I already. Good.
So, do we, Bloomfield has, there's some Facebook, there's some Facebook pages of the Bloomfield community, right? Are these, is this announced on the face, on the, those, on the relevant Facebook page? Are these, is this announced on the face, on the those, on the relevant Facebook pages?
I have to check because I did ask for it to get posted on the um, what Keisha might did ask her to post it to the board's Facebook page. I didn't have to just double check with her because there was um, some issues with the size of the flyer. So I will um, reach out to her tomorrow to make sure she able to at least post it on her website for the board event.
I also posted it on my personal Facebook and Instagram. So the word can get out too.
That's great.
John, are those things that the police department can post? Or there's some criteria?
We have Instagram and Twitter that we can post it on. I don't, I don't know how to use any of that stuff, but I can have one of the younger guys do it.
You are one of the younger guys, John.
Guys after me.
All right, that's great.
I just, and this is done, I have on a Donnie as a username.
Yes, that's me. How you doing?
How are you?
I'm doing great. Thank you guys.
Also another thing for um, I do have the Zoom links for the vaping presentations. I just have to put together a brief flyer that I can send out with the link. So I'm also going to work to see if we can get it on our town's website. I just just have to figure out, we never done it before. We put the domain code where it would just show up the the link right onto the page. So we haven't used that before. So I'm going to see if we can get that as an option. If not, we'll just do our usual flyer that has information for them to see the video. So the vaping video is about an hour long. And we have it for our middle school students, high school students, and there's a special link for parents on vaping. On what to look for and how to support them as well. And that is going to be available for the whole month of April. So the goal is to get that out this week. So they can have that. And also I'm going to send it out to the schools as well as an additional um, as an additional resource that they can provide to the students.
Great. That's really good. Okay.
So those were my two community type events and programs that I have for the month of April. Did you have anything you needed to add Tiffany for April?
No, that's about it.
Um, any um, progress on the uh, human trafficking with Tammy Sneed? Were you able to?
Yes, so I did connect with her. Um, so basically, once I'm able to find some dates, we can coordinate um, a date and time to do the presentation for for the human trafficking. So it's just a matter of figuring out a date that will work the best. I know I told her probably May because April is a little bit packed with all of our different parent series and the vaping. So seeing if I can squeeze something in in May before um, before we hit to the end of the school year.
Okay. Great. I think that was from the last, that was the last discussion from last week. I don't think there was anything left from that. Roger, you were talking, but you're muted.
Yeah, I know. I realized that. I was just going to ask one of the other things that was mentioned. I was the police department's explorer program. I was just wondering how's that, how's that going or is it?
At our first, well, not our first, we've checked in with them throughout the shutdown. We had a meeting last week or I think it was last week, only three of the students signed on for it. The, I think that we're going to have much more um, success and interest when we're actually in person. About going in person this last time, but I wanted to give them a chance to just kind of get comfortable again. Not everybody's completely on board with kind of opening doors. I don't think we're going to do another Zoom explore meeting these kids. It's 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 more fair for them to get them in person and and I think that in, it'll likely be the third week of April, we'll bring them in in person. And I would hope that we will get our we have about fi- four to six people that have been actively engaged with us throughout the shutdown. And then there's probably another five or six that are waiting for activities to come up. So so hopefully we'll have a good ten or twelve to start this month and then build on it from there. Of our solid attendees, but it's going to be challenging to work.
Great, thank you. Any other other community?
Yes, actually I forgot. We are actually in the process of planning for the Bloomfield Police Department Youth is sponsoring a community kickball event. It will be sometime in May. So we're still in the works of fine tuning all the details of that. But um, once everything's situated, you will receive the flyer um, to spread the words and come on out and support the event.
Great.
The low did want to, oh, go ahead and joke him. The location is going to be um, what field that is, isn't actually far from our building.
I think it's called Parker. I think the field is called Parker's Softball Stadium or something like that. But it's right behind our building.
And I just wanted to reiterate, wanted to say that still have diapers. If you all know of anybody that needs diapers, just tell them to give us a call, come on down. And we have diapers.
Say who the we is in case people are watching on YouTube later, Shander.
Um, the home school center is located at on One Philly Street inside of Laurel Elementary School. They have to give us a call so that we can meet them at the door. Our number is eight six zero seven six nine five five one eight.
And I did want to just mention quickly, there are a couple of programs that are available to individuals who need help with paying for rent. One is called Unite CT. And if you Google Unite CT, you'll go to the website and you can see all the criteria. This was part of the CARES Act to assist people with back rent and rent moving forward. And the town of Bloomfield also has a much smaller program than the CARES Act that can also assist with those who have fallen behind with rent and mortgage. So if anyone needs information regarding either of those programs, you can call Bloomfield Social and Youth Services at eight six zero two four two one eight nine five for additional information.
Thank you. All right, Angelica.
Link to the youth services updates?
Yes.
Let me see if I can just pull up our. Just give me one minute. I have to, keeps closing out my screen that I need.
Want me to start with JR B in the meantime?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. So update for the JR B, the Juvenile Review Board. For the month of March, we received one new referral. We had six active cases. One case was closed. One case was returned to the court. We had two JR B hearings. Three JR B intakes and no mentor sessions. Things seem to be picking up right now for the month of April. This week alone, I've been on the phone a lot. Um, with the juvenile court, I got two referrals from there, one yesterday, one today. Then we may have a possible truancy case coming in. So things seem like they're going to start getting busy again. Right before spring break.
Tiffany, quick question. I'm sorry. Are these, the new case that came in, was it domestic or was it something else? Was it like auto theft or anything?
One was fighting, one was um, theft at the mall.
Theft at the mall, got it. Good, thank you.
Yeah.
Nothing unusual. Last, last, last month, we talked about more truancy cases, but apparently there's not a whole lot more. You you mentioned one, I think.
Yeah, one possible one is in the works of coming through. We're still figuring out if we're going to be able to accept it, just to see, make sure there's something we can actually do. I don't want to accept it and then no like there's no we could, way we could really benefit them. Um, so we're working out those details now.
Thank you.
I'm just going to move into the foster care support network. For the month of March, they had a couple of sessions. They had um, virtual movie night. We did a virtual paint night. We had an instructor come from um, the art child. She did a painting with the group as well. We did a virtual food session where we actually made home homemade cookies from scratch. So I was the cooking instructor for that session. So the cookies came out, not like the rest of me. But everyone, and I told him to say, you know, just try again. And you know, there's a lot of practice that it takes to make homemade pieces. But everyone had a great time. And then on the twenty seventh, they did a virtual game, game night as well for that group. And for participants, we have pretty much a steady group between seven to eight for most of the, for most of the groups. And we just had five for um, one of the virtual sessions.
So our next in-person meeting, we get samples of the cookies, right?
Yes, at the mix.
The ones that came out good.
Bake them fresh in our kitchen downstairs.
Just one, one other thing is when you program planning, and I've probably done this before, but if the foster parents are interested in learning more about special education, I can, I I can volunteer to help with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Roger, what we can do, if you have like a little blurb, we can put that in our newsletter that we send out.
Okay, just see if there's any interest. I mean, most kids who are in foster care have experienced various forms of trauma, for example. And I don't know, I don't think parents in general and particular foster parents are particularly informed about special education and I saw, I I mean, I I used to do that for ABC years ago. And I've been doing special education for a number of years now. So I can answer questions or I can, we can talk about finding out what they're interested in and presenting something. Just, you know, just keep it in mind.
Okay, so yeah, I can figure out a way we can get that information to see if we have a current group of parents that do have some interest in learning to learn more about that piece. So yeah, if there's something short that you want to email me, Roger, I can see how we can at least include a little blurb on our newsletter as well. Tiffany, did you want to move into the the next?
So for the Bloomfield Police Department Youth, they had a very busy month. They started off with the workshop on social media, which was presented by one of the detectives. And then they enjoyed a evening of a paint night with painting with a purpose. The kids really enjoyed that. I didn't know how artistic so many of our officers are and some of our youth, they were all into it. They came out beautiful. Some even took paint home to finish up because they were so into every detail. We also did a community service project where they made little kits for the senior center that consists of like a word search puzzle, jumbo size, jumbo deck of cards, candles, hand sanitizer, stress ball, some candy, some sweet treats, you know, everyone loves that. So that went really well. The senior center was very excited for that. And the kids made individual cards, just kind of saying like, thinking of you. They had little jokes. They would put in the cards. So it was really cute. They again use a lot of their artistic skills. Some decided to draw pictures. I remember one young man, he did like a latte and was just like missing you a lot. Like it was cute the way they did it. But they really took it seriously and spent a lot of time on that and took pride in their work with that. They also did, under their influence and car stops, we took advantage of the nice weather that evening and they went outside and got to really sit in the car and see what it's like to the protocols of being pulled over. And then we had them put on the goggles of being under the influence. So they really got to see what it's like. And at the end, they were just dying laughing to realize like they were tripping over their own feet, how they couldn't even get in the car. Because they were either drunk, high, or just really tired. So hopefully they learned a lesson that this is a direction they don't want to go. But they did enjoy the experience. And then last week they did a workshop on human trafficking, which one the detectives also led. That went well as well. And today they get to have even more fun by doing Olympics. So they actually have a competition outside right now with with the youth and officers. So John and I get to miss that unfortunately. And then we have the Sunbeams Girls Group. Um, that group is going well for March. They had, we discussed gender norms. We took a look at women leaders. Then we also did like a little game competition, just to make sure they really got things out of the discussion. And the girls did amazing on the quizzes. And really enjoyed it. And then we focused on mindfulness and self-care. And with that, we also had a guest speaker, Ms. Tamar Dawn from Phoenix Therapeutic Services. And she actually went over a lot of self-care tips. She practiced yoga with them, how to do meditation. The girls really enjoyed it.
That's great.
Next, we have Project Three Thirty, which is our leadership group. We did a combination of, we had a team building night and we actually did a marshmallow challenge and that that proved a lot of team building and strategy strategizing to see who can build the highest structure. Not sure if you're familiar, but the marshmallow challenge is you gets so many strands of spaghetti, one marshmallow, some string and tape. No rules, no guidelines. It's just, you just have to have the marshmallows stand at the top. The tallest, tallest freestanding structure when and we just had one structure that was able to stand. But um, everyone had a good time with that as well. Really got to see the dynamics between which students took on more of a leadership role, how they work together as a team to um, execute the task as well. For the seventeen, we did have the guest speaker, the one that's going to do our parent series from Evolved Behavioral Health. She focused on time management and kind of gave the kids some strategies on how to effectively manage their time, better practices for when they're at home during their virtual work to not do their work in the bed, find a different spot. In the houses do they work, even if it's sitting on the floor. It's just when you're in the bed, you associate going to sleep. And that's what basically happens. A lot of the, the kids did enjoy this session as well. They got to learn a lot of, a lot of different tips. And even got to the point where right in the meeting, we'll have them set reminders, like, okay, set a reminder to do certain assignments. It was really trying to have them participate in the session and take action steps along the way. So that way, when they left the session, they kind of have a mini action plan that they can follow up on as well. On the twenty fourth, we did a game night. We wanted to keep it fun. So we had from video games to dominoes to your classic board games. And I lost a lot of rounds of dominoes that night. We had, we had fun. I, I didn't get into the video games because I was like, I I don't know what's happening with these buttons, but they had a good night. I tried to have it where we do a mix of instructional stuff and some fun stuff to kind of have them fun. They always come in there with us as well. And then we did have the speaker from Evolved Behavioral Health come back on the thirty first, and she focused on mental health and self-care that they can do for themselves in terms of grounding techniques, how to kind of regulate when they feel they're anxious. And this was a hard topic because we had some kids that are currently experiencing some of these issues. And it's kind of hard to like either deal with it and um, get through it. But we actually had a good discussion. The students were really open about sharing their struggles and things that are working, things that aren't working for them as well. And with this one too, at the end, the action steps, we had a couple of different apps for them to actually download and try. One of them, one of them is Headspace. And one's like coloring for kind of like coloring, coloring for adults that you do on your phone. And it was one other type of um, guided type, guided type of med- meditation. And presenter, she also always gives me different handouts based on our presentations that she does to give supplemental stuff. So they can have another handout document of what we cover as well. For the tribe group, this is our young men's mentoring group. Some of the things they worked on was checking in and agrees of basically working on ways that they can maintain or raise those grades. Some of the things they worked on was checking in and agrees of basically working on ways that they can maintain or raise those grades. They also had another activity on the eighth, which is a who am I? So for them to kind of get an idea of really in-depth about who they are as a person individually and different characteristics that they want to work on as a young man. We didn't have program on the fifteenth. And the twenty second was um, they did the paint night. And they talked about resilience as a theme that Tiffany mentioned as well, so that one um, was a really good group as well for the paint night. They used the same painter that the police group did, and everyone actually except for one student wasn't able to show up, but everyone showed up. They painted what they needed to paint, and it was a good activity to have for them as well, to kind of bring some of that all together in terms of the themes of being resilient and what they're working on. Our next group is our life skills group. So this one is our group focusing on those basic life skills, we did car maintenance. We actually went outside and we had um, had them look under the hood to kind of learn about all the different things. Walk through like when you take your car to the dealer and they get that printout of the diagnostic of all the things from the tire marks, battery, oil, all of that stuff, we actually had a little mock one. We went through all the line items and brought them outside to see a visual under the hood, like this is the battery. This is where you put your gas at, this is your hazard lights, don't touch this. You know, basically when you wire, when you um, doing your batteries, don't put these too, because you might get shocked, or you will get shocked, so it's just but I'm just basic stuff, tire pressure, um, rotating tires, so they really got to see like what's all involved with that as well. And we did mention briefly on how to go through a process of purchasing a car, so we not only talked about enjoys maintaining a car, but when you go to actually purchase a car, and that was that was new for a lot of kids, just learning about credit score and down payment and insurance, and how all that equals out to a, a lot of money. Another thing we talked about is job application, where we basically walked them through the appropriate for um, filling out a job application online, where to find those hidden jobs, like those small mom and pop stores that may not be posting online, but they have a help wanted sign. I was just mentioning lately, I've been seeing a lot of help wanted signs in our small, small businesses. It's only because there are some hidden job areas to find employment beyond your main websites, like Indeed. Uh, we walked them through the protocols of how to appropriately, properly do the application. And also when you do that interview, how to shine with that as well. Then the last segment we worked on was to kind of finish up a little bit more of the job application, and the kids wanted to know a lot more about finding an apartment, like what are some of the things for background check? The area, so we actually looked around on one of those apartment websites. And we looked at different states and different towns and explained to them the cost of living, kind of dictates the cost of rent. You're gonna have a roommate, and a lot of the kids were like, well, we're going to get a roommate, because it's really expensive and so just understand if one roommate leaves, you're gonna have to figure out the cover of that cost of that apartment still for the month, so um, just really getting them to understand how credit works, how budget works, how just life in general, like the skills that they need. And um, it was robust, we got a lot of good feedback from the kids in terms of getting, getting skills out of this program, this was our first session that we did a whole life skill series. This is a program that I'm definitely going to keep continuing on throughout our programs and finding ways to weave some of these components into all of our existing programs, but um, the parents like this one, so this was one of my, this is a really good program. For community events, we had Courage to Speak. They came out, they um, virtually, they did two virtual presentations, one for um, two of the health classes that we have at BHS. And it was a good um, turnout as well, as well. As I see you have your hand raised, did you have a question?
Sorry, my apologies, I was a little quick on the button, I want to, when you're done, I just have a section for the announcements, if you don't mind, I apologize.
Okay, yeah. So yeah, for um, Courage to Speak, for BHS, we actually worked with their health classes, we got permission to use their one-hour block health class to do that presentation, for most classes, I don't have the numbers here, we had about eighteen for one, and I think sixteen, sixteen or seventeen for um, the other health class. For admin, these are just some of the meetings that was attended between Tiffany and myself. These are basic everyday meetings, from North Central Meetings, the Rack Meetings, so monthly staff meetings. And every week we meet with um, the CAMs Middle School, we do our meeting session for our CAMs after school program as well. Those were all of our updates for youth services, does anyone have any questions about any other programs mentioned for the month of March?
Sounds like a lot.
Yes, as I was going, I'm like, I'm still going.
And some pretty good stuff too. Really tough areas. It's great to see the life skills, we've been talking about that for quite a while. So that's awesome to be able to see that, hopefully we can, um, once we get to a place of being in person, more kids can benefit from all of the programming.
Yes.
So we're, we're at the announcement, are we all set with youth service program updates, anything else with those?
No, that is all set on my end.
Okay. Hector, were you wanting to go now?
I do, I do, I want to apologize to the group, I'm kind of out of it today, so my apologies for not giving a, a lot of commentary there, I have a few things if you don't mind, so an announcement, a comment, and then a question, um, so please bear with me here. Um, a couple of things, as far as an announcement's concerned, uh, State Representative Bobby Gibson actually reached out to me. And I assume a couple, a few other folks as well, uh, they are actually holding a COVID vaccine clinic uh, at the Artist Collective, which is at two hundred Albany Avenue in Hartford. Um, it is being held Friday and Saturday, unfortunately of this week. Uh, Friday is booking up pretty fast, uh, Saturday is still pretty much open. Uh, they will be providing one of two vaccines for, for a choice, either the Pfizer vaccine or the Johnson and Johnson vaccine, and uh, Mr. Get, excuse me, uh, State Representative Bobby Gibson is actually giving preference, if he can, to Bloomfield residence. What he has asked if that, um, if you'd like to sign up, uh, please give him a call. Uh, you can reach him directly at eight six zero three zero six 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 three eight, and again, the number is eight six zero three zero six 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 three eight. So that is the announcement that I have, any questions about that piece?
Hector, is that the same one through the Trinity Healthcare of New England?
I believe so, I believe so, so um.
So it's eligible.
It is.
Yeah, and it's, I don't know, I can't, I don't know the details behind the state um, eligibility rules right now, but I pretty much believe it's everybody under, over the age of.
Sixteen and over.
It is, sixteen and, I have the flyer up, it was sent to us at work, so it's sixteen plus. It's going to start Friday night at five PM through Saturday, uh, through five PM.
Excellent.
The, the Bloomfield, West Hartford Health District also has a clinic on um, Friday at the old um, uh, Stop and Shop or Shopright Plaza on Kane Street.
Okay.
In West Hartford, yeah, for Bloomfield and West Hartford residents as well. So people can call our office or the senior center to inquire about that.
Is pre-registration required for that one, Camilla?
Yes, but they can call us to register.
Okay, that's great.
Outstanding. Um, a quick comment, and I think it goes without saying at every meeting, it seems like, but this is something we repeat, but I, I would be remiss without saying, um, Angelica, Camilla, Tiffany, the work that you guys are doing right now, uh, in, in this environment is without question some of the best work I've seen in any public municipality. Um, and I've done some research and looked at a couple of different things. Uh, you guys should pat yourselves on the back. It is unbelievable the work you guys are doing, and I commend you. I think it's important that you guys hear that very often, if not every single day, uh, to understand the work that you guys are doing. Um, I hope as things start to reopen, we start to uh, transition to more in-person. Um, you know, kind of taking advantage of some of the good weather uh, that we may encounter in the past few, uh, in the next few months. Uh, but again, uh, continued support and, and accolades from people, I, I would imagine in this group as well as others, so that's my comment on that.
Thank you, Hector.
My pleasure, my pleasure. Um, last thing, and this is, this is the unfortunate piece, I didn't want to I wanted to start off with this, but I thought it might kind of derail some of the commentary and announcements that we had. Uh, I would like to know, if possible, do we, do we know where we stand on our town council representative? Because this is now meeting number two, where
Yep.
Uh, we were assured we would have some sort of representation, and now we do not. And this is the second meeting where we do not have that representation.
Yeah, I would echo that, both of those.
I will um, inquire, it's been budget time for this past few weeks. Um, past month leading up to budget time, so I know that has been a major focus. Um, but I will follow up and, and inquire with the town manager to ask the mayor if she has appointed anyone, I haven't heard as of yet, if anyone has been appointed. Um, but I will follow up, and hopefully the next meeting have an answer.
Thank you, Camilla, I think it's important that we, you know, and again, and we talk about this all the time, to have representation so that we can spread the word about some of the work that we do. You know, we speak to it every single time we meet, and how sometimes when we're not actually um, on the phone and in the meetings, you know, we encounter each other on any given time, so to not have that representation, and it almost feels like that support from um, town council is, is disappointing to me personally.
I would agree.
Yeah, I hear you, and I know this has been an ongoing conversation over the years, so.
Right.
Fair enough, fair enough.
And it would be nice if two meetings left in this session before we wrap up for the summer, so we have May and maybe a June meeting, so.
The last thing I want to do is I want to, you know, send kudos out to those that work on the GRB, uh, the JR B, excuse me, um, the police, as well as the Family Resource Center. The work that you guys would do with social new services is, it does not go unrecognized. Um, I, you know, I hope that we continue to get that, that support throughout the years from all of you. And uh, the work that you guys do is, is again, just as good as some of the stuff that the department itself puts out, they can't do it without you, and um, you know, I personally, as a, a resident within the town, and one of, of uh, many parents in the town that utilizes a, a lot of what you guys do, um, I commend you all, thank you.
I'd, I'd like to take just a second to introduce my youth advisors. This is Josiah, and this is Janaya. And they keep me informed of all things you.
That's so cute.
Hi lady.
Roger.
Okay, thanks guys.
You get to prepare for board. That's great, thank you Roger, thank you Hector, um, I agree with everything you said. Any other announcements that folks have?
I do have one other announcement, um, I was asked to be part of the committee for the Portrait of a Graduate, that is in partnership with the um, Bloomfield High School and Board of Education, so Portrait of a Graduate is they're putting together um, kind of like a program that encompasses, not a program, but actually changing over their curriculum and trying to get community partners, partners involved with what are the things that a successful Bloomfield graduate would need to have to succeed in the twenty-first century? So they're looking at things from adaptability to sourcefulness, so like all these different characteristics, so we're in the planning phase where we're kind of putting together, partners together to try to figure out what would be the direction. So the goal is eventually from pre, from kindergarten all the way through high school curriculum to tailor these skills, if you're looking at um, team building or team management, like what does that look like for a kindergarten? What does that look like for someone that is in twelfth grade? So by the time if a, if our student lives in Bloomfield and goes to the whole system from kindergarten to twelfth grade, they will have all these skills to be competitive for the twenty-first century, so they're partnering with um, different committees within the town, youth services and the Board of Ed to really have all of us come together, they're awesome parents that are on the board as well to get a sense of what are some of those traits that we want to look at. I'm actually going to have um, Jessie White from the high school, the uh, one of the principals actually present at our staff meeting next week to explain the Portrait of a Graduate to our staff. So that way, when we're thinking about our programs, we, we will become more intentional about how can we with youth services incorporate some of these skills, because one of the biggest things I've been saying was like, how can we be more in unison and partnership to be more in collaboration, so I think this will be a really great thing that's coming to the forefront, so the goal is they want to have this at least the planning done by the end of June or July. And then within the Board of Ed, they're trying to figure out the logistics of how that will look for curriculum, curriculum wise. And when they're partnering with different departments, how we can be streamlining these different traits and characteristics that we can build for the youth. Part of, also part of the committee will be designing like a logo that will be for the Portrait of a Graduate, so when people see this, or like your flyer or website, they know these are the characteristics and skills that we're working towards to have Bloomfield youth encompass with their education with, um, within the school system, so. It's still, uh, it's exciting, it's just um, figuring out how we're going to work it all out together, but I'm excited to be part of this committee as well, our next meeting will be this, this Thursday. So for our next council, I'll give you updates on um, the two meetings and what it looks like moving forward for this, for this process.
That's great.
The more we coordinate with the schools, the better. And that does bring me up to one other issue, one question. When does the course on African-American history start, does it start this September or next September?
I'm not sure, um, I can see if I can.
I'm just thinking if it starts next, this coming September, this coming school year, we might find a way to put that information out, because it's, it's a, uh, it's not a mandatory class, it's an elective. And I, I think the more, my own personal opinion is the more people who take that, the better. And we can get some publicity out for it, if it starts in September, I think that'd be a good idea.
Angelica, are there any recent graduates on that committee? That really could give you, you, uh, the committee a realistic view of?
I'm aware of, I can ask, I can send the email to find out if there's any recent graduates.
Okay.
I know they do, well, they did, they are planning on selecting a few um, youth to be part of the board as well. So I'm assuming these, well, I don't want to assume, but I'm assuming these youth will be either current or recently, so I'll verify, but they did mention they're going to have youth that are on this um, committee as well.
Okay, that would be great, just gives you, you know, gives a true sense around what some experiences have been for kids, especially once they leave. Um, things that they, ideas and suggestions they have around uh, better programming, what they felt that they missed, or things that worked great for them, so. So I heard you say they were parents, I just was wondering if there were any young adults.
Are young adults, I'm not sure how many in total, but I know they definitely are going to have a few um, young adults part of the committee as well.
That sounds great, we look forward to getting the updates from you on how what are you guys coming up with? Any other public comments or announcements, really no public, we only have board members here today, but any additional announcements from anyone? No, it's hard, let me scroll through, okay, there we go. I can see everybody now, all right, it looks like we are all set right now, do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Everybody's muted, so.
No one wants to leave.
I, 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 I motioned that we have adjourned the meeting, I don't know what time it is though.
It is seven sixteen. All right, we all in agreement?
Aye.
All right, thank you for joining us, thank you guys for reporting out, have a great evening.
Thanks everyone, be safe.
Be safe everybody.